Hey everyone, thank you so much for joining our live today. We're gonna go ahead and get started and just have a wonderful conversation talking about what's going on in education. Um, there's a tongue tied and twisted. Thank you to those who have joined the Zoom and for those who will be joining us live on Facebook, just give me a little second. I'm trying to refresh my page so I can get the chat up and running. So I make sure we don't miss the chats from people who are engaging with us on the Facebook Live and not necessarily in our Zoom. I do have some announcements today that I want to get started with. There's a lot of great things happening in the city. There's a lot of phenomenal people, okay, hold on, doing a lot of great things. And I want to make sure that um, we acknowledge them and I, I won't be able to get everyone because I don't know everything that's happening. But if you're doing work in this community, if you're helping somebody, if you're being kind, then just a big shout out to you. Um, thank you so much for joining us today. I'm Camila Bywaters, I'm running for the Board of School Trustees in District E. So I'm gonna start, I call this my uniforms, I'm gonna start wearing my uniform a little bit more often now, more often now. So that I could just make sure that I'm just spreading the word about my candidacy here. And I look forward to engaging today with just our community and talking about, I thought it was important tonight to talk about the upcoming school board meeting and how we can be prepared. We also have some guests who are gonna pop in. We have Regent Laura Perkins who's popping in, so I definitely want to give her an opportunity to just talk about um, what she's doing and her role in education and whatever she wants to add. You know, I love Regent Perkins because she just always just adds value. She's been a number one supporter of Levapsey and we just love her. We want to make sure that we honor and support the work that she's doing. And um, as we're getting started, we have people joining the Zoom, so I'm also gonna be letting people in. But really quick, there are some events that are happening across the city and I want to acknowledge the ones that I do know about. And we have Dr. Young, Dr. Young is a former trustee in District C. She has the Village Foundation banquet scholarship gala that's coming up. And that is on March 2nd. If you're interested in attending that event, please get a ticket. Come on out, you'll be supporting scholarships. Like every year, the Village Foundation gives scholarships to our students who are in college. And it's a great opportunity to help and support those who could use some financial support. You know, as I graduated from Howard University, many of my friends, we was eating noodles, what they call oodles of noodles. So help out some um, college students so they can go to the Cheesecake Factory. And I know there's a lot of drama out there about the Cheesecake Factory, y'all, but go ahead and get you a strawberry lemonade. So go ahead and help the students out, um, help them to get some of the supplies that they need. Also, big shout out to Belinda Denise. Belinda Denise is getting an award at the Taste and Soul um, that's hosted by the Black Image. So shout out to her and if you hadn't have, I haven't had an opportunity to check out her um, her lives, please make sure that you do. I'll make sure that I get the final information to um, everyone's um, to the events that I'm talking about, to the pages that I'm talking about, I'll make sure that I share that out. Big shout out to Mr. Rodney and Shaquilla. Today, they hit us up and was like, do you know anyone who needs food? So they were um, on their journey today, making sure that our community had access to food. Shaquilla is on the call today, so big shout out to you and Mr. Rodney again for um, doing that work and ensuring that our community can eat. Listen, I just got back from an education conference and there is so much food waste. It's like really, we're wasting so much food and we have so many hungry people. So I'm just really glad that um, you two were able to do that today. Um, those are all the events that I have today. Feel free if anybody on the car right now has any events that they would like to share, you can go ahead and take this time. If not, we'll just continue moving on. Anyone? Okay, um, big shout out to Tracy, she's on the Facebook Live. Um, I'm hoping she joins into the Zoom because we do have a lot of things that we want to share today. Um, Regent Perkins, did you want to say anything?
No, just hello and I'm glad to be here. I don't know how long I'll be able to stay, but I will stay as long as I possibly can.
Awesome.
Thanks for the shout out, I appreciate it.
Of course, of course, you know, we celebrate you. If you didn't see, we celebrated our Regent Perkins for Black History Month. Um, if you saw, Levapsey also celebrated. Um, we want to make sure that we um, highlight our namesake schools that are honoring our um, black trailblazers in the state. We honored the UNLV president, um, President Whitfield, our trustees, and we have more to come. So please, um, stay tuned to that. It's really important that in the work that we do, that we are acknowledging those who've made the work that we do today possible. So thank you, shout out to um, rest in peace Marzett Lewis. So we, we make sure that we just honor the people who've gone before us and also Deborah Jackson. All these names are coming up, but we honor all of you. So at this time, um, yeah.
I will, I, I would be remiss to talk about the Deltas found, um, ah, Lord have mercy, we, they had their uh, was going out of mind, but Joy Ann Reed was the speaker. And she is excellent, I'm not sure if anyone taped her speech, but it was a great speech. Uh, and she connected it to uh, voting and what's going on in the world. And her book, Meger and Merly, as she talked about it, it's a great book.
Okay.
Meger and Merly, I'll send you the information, it's written by Joy, it's, it made the number one on the best seller for this, this week.
Awesome, and you said the Deltas had an event?
Yeah, we had our um, oh, I'm, I don't know why I'm having a, I can't think.
Founder's Day.
Founder's Day, thank you. Yeah, and it was Nevada State Founder's Day, I tell you, it's been a long day.
It's okay.
And it was a great event, it was sold out months ago and uh, Joy Ann, like I said, I, I can't say enough about how, how she, how well she was.
Yeah, I bet, I love, I love her, I saw the pictures and I was like, dang, I'm not in the room. But I'm glad you all had a great time celebrating your Founder's Day. Thank you for all the work that you all are doing in the community and it's really just a blessing. Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Amy. Um, and when you pass me the information, I'll make sure to share it with um, the community. Did anyone else have an event they wanted to share? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. And so tonight, what I wanted to talk about is our upcoming school board meeting. If you have not had a chance to look at the agenda, we're still in our transition period, trying to figure out what's going on with Superintendent Jara. How much money is he gonna get paid? Is it a termination, is it a resignation? Who's gonna be the interim, how long are they gonna be the interim? And then they're supposed to be planning for what the, a planning discussion around what it should look like for hiring a new superintendent. So I'm sorry, but there's some discrepancies in our opinion about that discussion for the long-term planning and we'll talk about that. But if you haven't had a chance to look at the agenda, you can get the agenda from ccst.net. You can go to the section that says trustees and then you go to board meetings and you'll be able to get the PDF copy of the agenda. So it is really important that the community is involved in this process because decisions are happening as we speak. Yeah, I'm gonna say that, these decisions have been going on behind the scenes and in front of the scenes at school board meetings. And it's really important that we're really engaged in this season and this time right now. Because there is potential that a new school board, I'm, I'm sorry, there's potential that a new superintendent will be selected prior to the new trustees being um, voted in. And that's really important that we're engaged in this process because essentially from a community standpoint, the community has not had a good relationship with our board. And I'm gonna say we have a four-three split board. So we have a majority vote that's pretty much in their own wheelhouse. Um, we have a minority vote who, those individuals, those trustees, trustee Guzman, trustee Cavassos, Guzman and Zamora, they're very in tune with what, with the community. And we have the other four who have not necessarily been in tune with the community. So it's important that we're a part of this process because we may have a potential of four trustees who have not engaged the community in the way that they should, making a decision about who the superintendent will be. We understand that some of those seats, uh, some of those individuals in those seats will not be in those seats come the um, next year. So I want to have a discussion around what your thoughts are around who should vote? Is this a, is this a thing, do we think this is a matter of, of ethics, professional responsibility? Because I could imagine, no, I, I pretty much know that trustees, President Evelyn Garcia Morales, Lola, who are kind of like the ringleaders, definitely Lola's like the ringleader. They feel like they need to put the district in a better place than what it was. I'm sorry, y'all had your turn, you, it, it didn't work out well, you didn't hold the superintendent accountable. You were trying to give him millions, you were trying to give him half a million, now you're trying to give him 250,000. And we have, we do not have the results that we need to see. Um, are there any, does anyone want to chime in? You can interrupt and chime in at any time, because this doesn't have, this is not about me doing all the talking. I'm really interested in what the community has to say. Um, um, okay. So, agenda item one, let me move this over. So the first part on the agenda, big shout out to the community for showing up at the work session, sending emails to the trustees, calling the trustees. Listen, some people were out here calling trustees' best friends to get them to talk to their friend and let them know like, hey, the community really needs you to listen and take into account what students, what the staff, what um, support staff are saying about the decisions you're about to make on your own wheelhouse. Um, this work is the work of the people. And the more, my computer is like crashing here, I don't understand. Um, and the more that I'm getting involved and just listening and watching what's happening on the board, them four, some of them four board members, they're not interested in what's best for the community, what's best for first and foremost students and the people who are in schools every day. Their interest is in what they believe to be right and true. So again to the agenda, agenda item 3.01 is the conditional resignation of the superintendent. Now remember from the first board meeting, it, there was a discussion around this being, okay, a termination, because that first agenda item, at that time, they voted no on a resignation. So we've come back around, my friends, to a conditional resignation of superintendent. It's changed from a termination. So what that means is that they're trying to protect Superintendent Jara so that he can have a clean slate. And so that on his resume, it doesn't say that he was terminated from the role of a superintendent. I mean, that's a big, that's a big deal. So that's where we are with that agenda, that's agenda item 3.01. And this will be the um, the agreement would be for the superintendent to have the conditional resignation and to receive a $250,000 payout. What are your thoughts on that? If anyone chiming in on Facebook, there are really different thoughts around that. There are community members who are like, go ahead, just give them the money, let's roll out. Um, the, the price is a lot cheaper than a million, it's a lot cheaper than a half a million, it's only 250,000. Um, some people are like, well, no, that shouldn't even be the 250,000 option, shouldn't be an option either. Because who else has that opportunity to get $250,000 when they resign? And specifically after we're talking about the drama that our teachers are continuing to go through about their contracts and pay and increase in pay. And I, and one thing that I've been saying is that this will set a precedence for other superintendents to say, oh, y'all check out Las Vegas, Clark County School District, see how they do. You can go there, be a superintendent, bring no results, and then try to negotiate your way and become, you know, almost a millionaire, if, if you can do it, if you can rock that boat. So it's, we're really setting a precedence here and we have to be mindful of that, of what we're um, spreading to other people. Tracy, did you have something you wanted to say? You know, I'm calling you out, so I can take a break.
Well, good evening to our Facebook friends and everybody that is um, on the call. So yeah, we need everybody to show up to the board meeting on Thursday like you did that week before last. Um, there's a whole lot that is at stake right now and they're betting on that we won't show back up. Um, I usually always try to have some tricks up my sleeve to do some different things to kind of throw a a, a, a snowball into whatever is going on with them. Because you know, the four hatchet head women, they're always doing that. But um, we need to throw some other names out there for interest for this interim superintendent's position besides Brenda Larson Mitchell and Jason Gowdy. That, those were the two people who Jara put in his contract. So basically, um, Jara's contract is dictating everything that is happening right now. And so we all have to be very mindful and understand what is, what, what's happening right now. So whatever the four women go with, just know that there's a whole other story behind the scenes with that, that situation that's going on. So we need to throw some other names out there such as Dr. Bart, um, Joe Caruso.
Monica Cortez, Dr. Monica Cortez, just throw a name out there.
So even Dr. Scavella's name has been coming up. So we're just trying to have some other names because what we do know that is a fact is that um, principals will walk off like they did about a year or so ago. I think we lost about 30 seasoned principals because uh, things just crazy going on in the district. And we're not really in a position to lose any more good quality people. Uh, so that's number one, they have been very clear that if Brenda Larson Mitchell is the permanent superintendent, um, they will walk. Um, so I know she's one of the favorites to be interim. Some of the conversations that we, we've been having in some of the circles, the educational circles, there have just been a lot of uh, appetite just to kind of come up with different solutions. So one of the solutions is, besides the interim piece, is throwing out the different names, right? Whoever that person is that they select and being mindful that the four votes can always come back and change anything at any given time. So we have to be very clear on what we're asking for. We have to be very intentional on what we're saying at the board meetings and writing letters. Uh, is that that individual, whoever that interim is, this is part one, that person's only there until the end of the school year. This calendar school year, which is what, in June, I think it's like 60, 70 something days left of school. After that piece of the puzzle has been talked about, the other half is for um, I guess they have some work sessions that will be coming up. And then those work sessions, they need to be able to have the same conversation that they had when Jara walked off and they were asking for an interim superintendent to come in. We need to put names or have names ready to go for a interim for a short amount of time to give the new Board of Trustees the opportunity. And I'm trying to be as intentional and as clear so people can understand what I'm saying. To give the new Board of Trustees after this election in November is over to be the ones to pick the superintendent to create the contract. I mean, because if not, what's gonna happen is we're gonna get somebody that's probably gonna be the same as what we already have from this Chiefs for Change or a Greater Councils of City Schools, whatever these titles are, these people are all intertwined. And the bottom line is they're about destroying public ed, um, excuse me, public education. So those have been some of the conversations, but basically the next big fight and the intention on Thursday's board meeting, the messaging and the language needs to be that the new trustees, whoever is elected in November, they get to select, do the search, whatever they're gonna do for a new superintendent and create that contract. Um, I hope I'm as clear as I can possibly be. I'm trying to put it in layman's terms so the average parent, Joe Blow, can get it and understand it. Because there are multiple moving pieces that are going on. And while we're having these conversations, trust and believe, the four votes, they're having conversations as well. So when they go in, that's why when they have those meetings, they know how to vote, they get in, they get out. They don't want to hear anything that the community has to say. So when the community has the opportunity to speak, these are the things that they need to be saying. If not, it's gonna be business as usual with the four women. Now, we also know that Evelyn is up for election. Um, I'm hoping that Tamika Hemi comes in and she's getting this information because that is a platform for her to stand on right now. Just like with Camilla, Camilla can stand on that, Anna can stand on that, I think Anna is on here somewhere, I, I thought I saw her name. But the bottom line is, we cannot keep doing business as usual. And this is the, the critical election of our lifetime. We keep hearing that over and over, democracy is on the line for us in education, right? Civil rights is our education, that's what Levapsey-Napsey stands for, that's what we're about. And so Levapsey stays in their land. We know where the bodies are buried, we, we, we just know majority of everything that's going on. The players have changed, but the game is still the same. And so we've got to get people who are all on the same page, who all understand that this is about all children, about all people. But we in the black community know that we are more at risk than some other folk. The bottom line is, our data, when you look at it, is the worst in every subject category known to mankind. And that's, that's just really shameful, when at one time, we were a really thriving district. And at one time, we were ran by, uh, we had a black superintendent where it was an all-black school district. And they weren't having these issues, but I know that was back in the day and we're in a whole new time. But I'm just saying, typically when things are working really well for um, black students or students of color in education, everybody tends to benefit. That's just been one of our philosophies from the beginning of time. So I'll shut up and let some other people chime in. But if I haven't been clear, you guys can call me, talk to Camilla, we can break it down. But we definitely need people to be in attendance at the board meeting and it's gonna be on flamingo. Uh, we definitely need people sending letters like they did before and we need people calling their trustees. And if you go to the board meeting and you are speaking, you need to say, my trustee is Evelyn Garcia Morales. This is what I need you to do. I need you to find a moral compass and use good sense, that's me. I would say something like that, everybody's not gonna say what I'm gonna say. Cause I may be a little more off the cuff than the average person. So you just need to be very direct and say what it is that you're looking for from your trustees, especially the ones that are up for election. So I'm gonna put myself on mute and let you guys have at it.
Yeah, thank you Tracy, that was really great information and I definitely agree with everything that was said. Um, and one thing that's really important as we're thinking about the appointment of the interim superintendent, remember, these are the conditions that Superintendent Jara is giving. Now, I'm trying to understand if that has not been like the process that we've used in the Clark County School District, now in other states, they may do something like that. But I don't understand, it really just makes me go to planet Pluto. Cause on what planet would the person who you are like deciding if they're gonna resign, you're giving them an option to resign, then they can be terminated, where then they get, then they get an opportunity to really have the audacity to make a recommendation? That, I don't understand that, um, Regent Perkins?
Um, I was gonna ask that very same question, great minds think alike. How, I don't even understand how you, a term, you're resigning, right? Cause now it's no longer termination, it's resignation. And that's kind of good because then you don't have to pay him out his contract. But if, if he was terminated, you might have to pay him out his entire contract. But because he's resigning, you resign, you don't get paid out, that's how, usually how that works. So how is he, how, how is the school board taking that? I mean, how are the members of the school board taking that? He's resigning and demanding basically that these people take my place? Like he's setting it up for his buddies to take his place? I don't, how, how's that being received?
May I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just going back to what you ladies said, I think it is a travesty that this superintendent could get paid what he has been getting paid for him to have contributed to the, the downfall of this district. And like Mrs. Perkins said, then determine the parameters of his so-called resignation and or termination. I don't understand, teachers don't even get that same, staff don't even get that same, that, you know, those, those same, uh, I guess uh, niceties, if you will. And for him to have done such a mediocre job and, and continue to be here, we really need to put our foot down, we really need to hold people accountable, we need to say those things that need to be said, like Ms. Tracy said. Um, it's not about, you know, being afraid or, or being, being courageous. It's about saying what needs to be said. So even if a person is, you know, timid, this is our children, this is our community we talking about. And we need to say what needs to be said so that we can get the right person to do the right job. Now, as far as the trustees go, um, I'm in District C, so Mrs. Garcia Morales would be my um, su, my um, you know, trustee, which, you know, I did not vote for her, but she won anyway. So we had to hold ourselves accountable as well about who's getting into these positions because they are beholden to us. We are the community, we are the taxpayers, right? We are the families, we are the, are the staff, we're in analogy schools all day. And we should have a say and we shouldn't be afraid to contribute to what's going, what's gonna be the outcome of our community. It don't matter where we are in the world, but especially right here in Clark County, we need to understand that being 48 in the whole United States is not a good thing. You know, being one of the lowest paid is not a good thing. And so we just need to stand up for ourselves, advocate for ourselves.
Absolutely Shaquilla, and as a teacher who's working, who's on the ground, boots on the ground every day, like your voice is absolutely so critical to this conversation. Now to answer the question, Regent Perkins, this agenda item is supposed to be the going back after the work session to negotiate the terms. So the, so the, I could imagine that this is what is wanted by the leaders to be a unanimous vote. They want Jara to get 250,000 because their original plan got busted up by the community. Because it was if
Yay, community, yay team.
Yes, the community, the community was like, oh, hold up, 500,000? No, a mill, uh-uh. Those plans got busted up. And if you remember in the school, and you can go, anyone can go back and watch, re-watch the school board meeting, uh, Evelyn Garcia Morales thought she had the votes for that first agenda item, which was the resignation. She thought she had the votes for that, the resignation with the $500,000 about give or take amount. But she didn't get the votes for that. That was a wrench in her plan because the community was like, wait. So what they did is on the second agenda item was the termination for um, uh, the termination for convenience, termination for convenience, they tabled that one. Because that was like, that had an enormous amount of money attached to it. So they tabled that to renegotiate with the attorney. So this would be the plan that they want the board to just move on with and move off. This is what they have agreed with, so this is what they want. Community, what do you want? What do you think should happen with taxpayer dollars? If we think, cause I know it's, it's mixed, there's people who are like, take it, go, good riddance, there's people like, heck nah, let's not do that. Now remember, the reason that we're in this debacle is because the trustees, we found out, Garcia Morales and Lola asked Superintendent Jara to resign, which then put us in the position, yes, thank you Anna, thank you for that reminder, because I was gonna bring that up too. Um, Um, if you're able to come in the Zoom, I'm not sure if you can, that would be great. But, um, they asked for him to resign, and then that put us in the position to be in a space of negotiation. Now, what Anna did bring up that I wanted, that, that actually was my next talking point, was that the attorney. The attorney represents the district and is not an employment attorney, is what Anna is saying. So that's one thing that's also, um, important to know. And I remember, I think it was, um, Chris, Chris G., who, who, who talked about that at the school board meeting and public comment. She said, you all need to get an employment attorney. Another thing about this attorney situation, this is the second attorney that I've seen since I've been back in the school district and going to school board meetings, and Tracy could, um, chime in on this too. But we've had issues with the attorneys. The first attorney that we had last time before the new one now, they somehow get in this debacle, and they're not working for the board. They end up getting in these little uh, situations where they're working or helping out one or two board members. No, the board attorney is supposed to be supporting all of the board. And that's another issue that we have to talk about and deal with, because if the, a board attorney is not supporting the whole board, then you don't need to be there. Period. And Anna, let me make, let me see if there's any, um, comments here. No comments. Okay, so I did have a question. What time on Thursday do people need to show up? So the school board meeting on Thursday, February twenty-second, is at five P M. So the location, it will be back at the Edward A. Greer Education Center. That's on twenty-eight thirty-two East Flamingo Road. I think we called that, what is that, the Taj Mahal? So it will be there. It's at the Taj Mahal, it's the pink one, the top, uh, uh, Sahara.
That's the head shed.
The head shed, thank you. Yep, that's the head shed. So that's where the meeting will be at five P M, back in the boardroom. Um, so back on there, let me go back down. Did any, if anyone else wants to chime in, please do.
I have another question, Camilla. Um, okay. Have, has the, uh, board members done like listening sessions to find out what the community wants? And, well, the way I see it is that there's plenty of time to do that. Um, you could do several listening sessions, um, over the time span of what, a month or six weeks? And you can hit all the districts in all the places and have, give parents in the community an actual opportunity to say what they need in a superint- or what they believe that the cap, this, you know, the school district needs to be successful. Um, I always say the people that are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. So, and, you know, if you're, if you're, like you said, boots on the ground, if you're in the classroom, if your child is attending one of, you know, attending the school, you know what your school needs. Or, you know, just by proximity, you know what your school needs. And I, that's, that's kind of where I was going with that. Have they done that yet? Do they plan to do that? And they might want to think about doing that, or that might could be one of the community's demands to do that before you even select a temp, you, you, you can have a temporary person for thirty days, sixty days. I mean, it's not gonna make much difference to the end of the school year.
Yes, and thank you for that, cause we'll definitely need to make sure that that's part of the messaging to have a listening session. No, the board has not even entertained that. And as Anna just said on, um, Anna Binder, uh, just said on the Facebook, she said, the only thing that people is just what has been emailed, or if you're talking to them on the phone. That's what they're calling a listening session. So that would be, and that's, I'm glad that you brought this up. Because now this begs, cause what they're saying is that this is an emergency. And that's why we're moving so quickly. But the questions, community, that we need to ask is, what is the emergency? What does the policy say about what an emergency look like? Cause I'm pretty sure that it, it's like, emergency, if the superintendent is hurt, did he die? Did something happen? So we need to find out, hey, team, the four majority, what's the emergency? Why are we moving so quickly? Help us out. So what they did try to do, because the community was like, hey, we want our voices to be involved, here goes the kicker. And I'm sorry, District C, y'all cannot vote. Well, let me, uh, let me not say that. Um, what am I gonna say? The president of the board, and I'm gonna say, because this is her agenda item, after the community has said, hey, we want to be involved, there were students who were at the school board meeting, hey, we want to be involved. There's no listening session. Here's what they put on the agenda. Item three point oh three, long-term planning, appointment of the superintendent. This is a discussion, not a discussion with action. So there's probably not, there's not gonna be a public comment. So President, let me make sure her name's on here, the contact person, President Evelyn Garcia Morales made the decision to put this on there without the audacity to hear from the community. So it's only gonna be the board talking about long-term planning. So no, their, their plan is not to do a listening session, or to hear anything. And, um, Evelyn Garcia Morales, if you're out there in Facebook land, just come on here. We can, you know, get the listening session started right now. Join the live. Anywho, so there's no conversation around that, because they want Superintendent Jara's agenda, which is his recommendations, which are Brenda Larson Mitchell, who wants to be the superintendent. And what's that other guy's name? Gouda?
Goudy. That's chief, uh, the chief financial officer who knows how to hide the money.
I'm being messy.
Let's just be real.
And his name in there as interim. So these are the people who are for this great city council of schools. Now, here's the commitment that I have made, um, to myself and to the community. Um, I am starting to do my own research on the, uh, council of great city schools. If you hadn't not had an opportunity, um, to listen to former trustee, um, Danielle Ford, please go and listen to her, um, podcast on YouTube, because she really breaks down everything that is happening in our district. You have to remember, education is a billion-dollar industry. So these cohorts get together, and they want to make sure that the people that are within their cohort do all the professional developments, do all the training, give all the software. Prime example, I was hot with, and I'm still hot, cause I bring it up every time, that paper, um, the district paid like fifty-five million dollars for that paper tutoring program that we didn't even really use. Now, here's the kicker, um, I had got a news report from Paper where they had, had these contracts with other districts. Imagine, if they got fifty-five million from one district, they probably got around the same amount from other districts, plus or minus. And people were complaining because they weren't doing their job. So it's things like that that we have to be aware of. You gotta follow the money, follow these organizations. So what I've done, um, what I started to do today, is get all of the districts that the Council for Great City Schools, um, the districts that are part of their membership. And I'm gonna, I want to see what their results are. What, where are they in regards to rank? What are their achievement levels? Because if y'all just gathering up all the schools and you're not improving anything, then what is the purpose of it? So Brenda Larson Mitchell, which they keep bringing up, is a part of, she's being mentored by this group. Mind you, Jara is on the board of the group. So we paying all they people, we paying people in other states. Hello? No, people in Nevada. Listen, if you have the skills, you can do professional development here in Nevada, that money should go to you, because you've contributed to public education here in Las Vegas. Not no person way over there in Florida. Florida don't even want you saying D E I. Texas over here don't even want you saying D E I, but yet we support companies, these big status quo companies in those states. So what I'm doing is I'm gonna do my research on the schools that they, um, that are members and look at their, their statistics. Um, it, it's really, again, if you haven't had a chance to go see trustee, um, Danielle Ford, cause people just thought she was on another planet. But no, she really has done her work to track the individuals, track the money, track the cohort, and follow how all of this is coming together. And if you read education, um, there's novels out there, there's like the, there's one that I can't remember, The Myth, The Myth of Charter Schools and, um, public schools, you read the myths on charter schools. They talk about how education, it's a billion-dollar industry and everyone wants to be a part of it. So my thing is, no, let's focus on Nevada and focus on the people in our state who can move our district forward. We should not be happy that we're paying all these people outside of our state with the tax money that we give graciously to support our schools. So, the long-term planning, again, we are not being a part of that. So we're gonna definitely, Tracy and I are gonna be making our phone calls. I'm sure people, the community will be ma- uh, making their phone calls. Also, there's some comments here, so I want to make sure I will say this. Um, let me go back up here. So we did the attorney, the attorney's not an employment attorney. Anna said she's not gonna join, so we can make sure we end on time. And then, okay, she said she agreed, we're not gonna be able to comment. Belinda Denise said, these trustees don't want to listen to the community at all. The cameras are off and the comment section is blocked. Um, Goudy, if you have had it, haven't had a chance to follow Anna, please make sure you follow her pages, because she's the advocate in the Clark County School District. And she as well, has been tracking the money for years, and she has public record of this, of same statements, the same thing. She has public record of this, um, within the Clark County School District. And Anna says it's a concentrated effort to defund public education.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's where we are, yep. That's where we are, and Lola Brooks is the ringleader. And she's mentoring Evelyn Garcia Morales. As you could see, if you notice at the work session, Lola Brooks wasn't sitting close to, she wasn't sitting close to Evelyn, so Evelyn was lost, boy, she was lost. So I'm sure they were, um, my assumption is I'm sure she was texting her. But the reason we had that break in that meeting is because the girl broke down. She didn't know what to do, because Lola was not directing her. This is not the, this is not democracy, when two people are running the show, because they've gotten themselves in this, these agreements with this money and where funding needs to go, so they're trying to uphold that and ensure that this can stay in play. And with the interim superintendent Brenda and interim superintendent Goudy, we will continue to have the same, same debacle that we have now. Because they are a part of it. It is a part of, um, their, uh, their ethic to ensure that this cohort, Great City Council Schools and all their people that they know are indulging in the financial, um, uh, what is it, word I'm trying to say? They want to uphold what has been started. And I'm going to do my research, like I said, to see what's going on in the other states that are members of, um, this city of great council schools. And I'm going to say that my trustee is Lola Brooks, and Anna Binder has said it the best. She said, let's clean house together in number twenty twenty-four. We are really, we are really, you all, if y'all don't understand anything, we are at a prime crucial time to shift power in education, and not only shift it, but we need to also maintain and sustain it. And I really do believe that we can do that. We can do it. We have to clean house. We have to ensure that our students have a leader. I went to a school today. Principal then told the, the parent, you lie. That what was like my Cat Williams. No, now if y'all haven't seen that Cat Williams interview, let me tell you, he did a big shout out to education. He said, they don't care about education. So make sure you go watch that. There's a lot of cussing in it and stuff like that, but hey, I like Cat Williams. He really told the truth about his situation that he was going in, but that's what we're dealing with. That's, we're just dealing with this mess, and the principal told the, the, uh, parent, you lie, and said it more than once in their little, uh, voice or whatever. So what that, and what I told the leaders today, cause the associate superintendents, and they were there. And I said, listen, I don't blame that principal. I, I, we blame you. You are the administrative leaders, associate superintendents, superintendent, assistant superintendent. And under your leadership, you have, um, a principal who is out of line towards students, and an elementary principal, out of line towards elementary student, uh, elementary student, and out of line to their mama and grandma. And it was reported in October that this madness was happening. Here we are in February having a meeting. Y'all didn't do your job. And this is why I'm running for the Board of School Trustees in District E. Because the audacity to have leaders who are not compassionate, who don't speak kindly to the students that they're serving, like this is, you are a public servant who's getting paid. To have the audacity to tell a mom, you lie? And then you stop in meeting, uh, cause really what the problem is, the principal is upset, is because mom and grandma taught their son to advocate for themselves and does it graciously. And with kindness. So they're mad that a fifth grader can speak up for themselves. And this is happening under the associate superintendents and super, and region superintendents watch. No, new day. This is why it's important that we have leaders who are compassionate, who care about culture and climate. We will not be able to improve student achievement if you can't treat people with kindness. You just can't. No one's gonna listen to you if you're mean. We are not gonna be able to improve that until the culture and the climate of this district changes. And like I told the, uh, Regent Superintendent and Associate Superintendent in that meeting today, the reason I'm running is to clean this, to, to clean this up. I didn't say it like that. I said it a little bit nicer. To clean this up, cause it's unacceptable. As a leader in District E, you can guarantee a priority of mine is listening to the community. How, how are you being treated? There's people in the pool who can't even get out of the pool, because you got
You need to call out names. I'm, I'm at that point. You need to call out names.
Tracy, they call out their names.
Yeah, they, um, to be called out, because they've been in this district long enough to know what they need to be doing and what they should be doing. And because some of them happen to look like us, black women, black men, they get to get away with a lot of unnecessary things, because they feel like they're not gonna be challenged. And that is a huge problem in our community, like now. We're getting those calls that they have Dr. Barton reaching out to pastors, but not all pastors.
Right.
And to, to advocate and to support Brenda Larson Mitchell. Okay, that's fine, but if you're gonna do that, then you need to reach out to all the pastors and not just pick and choose which ones they're telling you to pick, to pick and choose to call. We, we have a big, huge problem within the black community when it comes to these kind of situations, because most of the people are not educational novice, I guess I can say it like that. They come around and they get involved when they know that the money is there. And that's why we say, follow the money. Because most of these individuals are getting contracts, they're getting schools, they're getting this, they're getting that. They come in to shut people up like Levapsi or others who are advocating, because we're telling them what is actually happening on the ground. Uh, and, and I will be the main one telling you all, for the last five or six years, if not longer, I'mma, and I'mma stretch it out and say seven years. I've been thrown under the buzz-bot community just from those group of people. Trying to help to navigate things in our community, to get our kids the services that they need, to get staff the services that they need, and here it is. Thirty years later now, I've been in this for over thirty years. I'm gonna say longer than thirty, but I'mma just give myself the thirty. And we still having the same conversations that we were having thirty years ago, we're having them today. And it's the same people trying to be the gatekeepers and the naysayers, or they want to regurgitate what they didn't heard. And the biggest issue that I have with a lot of these folk, they go and they sit in these meetings talking about they at the table. They go and they sit in these meetings talking about they at the table and they listening to the liar. So how you gonna listen to the liar? And knowing that the liar is lying to you, but then you want to come back and you want to regurgitate what the liar didn't say. It's not making sense. So help me to understand what's going on. If you don't want the truth, then don't come ask me because my first question is gonna be, do you want the truth or do you want a lie? And for some people, when I have conversations with them. A lot of stuff makes sense because now they're able to fill in the missing pieces or put their own little. Term on whatever they heard. And now for me and for others, it makes a lot of sense. Why certain people back in the day acted the way that they did at the board meetings? And I mean, I get it now. Because that is where my head is like, we have to be very creative in dealing with these folks. Because they're gonna always come up with some shenanigans and we gotta have some shenanigans to throw back at them to kind of keep this on a. On a even playing field, because if not, education is, is done. It's going down the tube. They keep talking about choice schools. Choice schools are your charter schools, your private schools and your public education. There it is. Parents don't understand that. They think it's some kind of magical fairy that's out there. And she's gonna come down and say, oh, your kid can go to this school. Well, if your kid get kicked out of a charter school or a private school. If there are no private schools, where are they going to school? Because now you got a homeschool. So I mean, I have a whole lot of information and I'm trying not to uh. Start spitting out names, but at this point and at this. At, at this time in my life. I have absolutely nothing to lose. By calling out the names and putting the names with the stories and showing where the bodies are buried and, and everything else. If folks need to know if they're not understanding what is actually happening in the educational system. That's a billion, a billion dollar industry. Just follow the money. That's all we keep saying is follow the money. Know which schools are the cash cows. That they're writing the grants. Off of our kids. Taking the money from the schools in our community and sending them to schools that don't need the money. That conversation, these whole conversations that everybody's talking about, these conversations have been going on for over thirty years. Nothing is new. The money's been tracked. People end up being killed, dying off, whatever. Because there, there's breaking it down where people can actually see what is happening. So Camila, I think at this point. When these situations are coming up, we're just gonna have to start calling out the names so these people will effectively start to do their job. Because they do not want to be called out publicly by names. And we know who our three main associate superintendents are over the regions. There are three black women. So we know we have Andre, Andrea Womack. We have Monica Lang. And we have Solis Rafer. They know better. They've been in this district. They know what's going on. So I put their names out there. And it's not allegedly, they are in these positions currently. Okay, I'm gonna shut up.
Well, we, we must hold them accountable. And one thing I want to make a note of, we're at six fifty-six. Ooh, time goes by so quick when it's juicy. Ooh, we. Um. Know who's running for school board. Know who's running. And here's one thing that we've been talking about. If you didn't see people advocating for you. Uh, years ago, a year ago. What makes you think they're gonna fight for you in that back room? The fight is happening in the back, not when they're on the dais. So when Evelyn does that little thing, oh, let's go to the back room. Hey. Let's go. That's where the fight is hap, the fight and the advocacy is not always happening on the front end. You gotta be able to, I gotta be able to trust that, oh, I know what Camila can do because guess what? She can, she was at the school board meeting. Saying A B C and saying this and that. I can count on her not to be afraid and to speak up for the community. Know who is running. Don't just because you see they sign out there and it's all pretty and they got the, all the money to buy all the signs. That don't mean, I, some of these signs I've seen up, I ain't never seen them at one school board meeting. Absolutely not. We have to do better as a community. We are in, we are, we are right there, community with a shift of power. Let's not mess it up. Research the candidates. Come on the Zoom meeting with us. Uh, candidates, y'all can come up on here too. You can come up here and let us know who you are. But we have to be mindful. I, when I see people up there, I'm like, why they not saying nothing? I'm not confused or concerned because I didn't see them saying anything before. You didn't advocate for the community before. You didn't advocate for students before. You came when it was time to run for office. We have to do better. Listen. I can't wait, but listen, if, when I win that seat. I'm gonna have a whole salute. I already told my mom, I'm getting my speech ready. I'm gonna have a whole monologue. Because this did not just happen yesterday. This has been for me, uh. Uh, I think I kind of like thirteen years. I came in this work because of the drama that I went through at Canyon Springs High School. Tracy came to the rescue. Uh, we restarted Levapsi. This was like in twenty. Uh. Twenty, what, what year was that Tracy? Because Jennifer was still living and actually Jennifer. Jennifer Lee worked at Canyon Springs High School. That young lady was, they hated her because she was a young black woman. Who had a, a, a assistant, she was a assist, a assistant principal secretary. Those jobs were like, are like prime gold in the district. And they hated on her because this young lady had that job. She is no longer living because of the stress and the drama that she experienced at Canyon Springs High School. She's actually the person who got us on the Underground Railroad. She did not live to make it for us to restart Levapsi. She did not. She died because of all the stress and drama. That she was um experiencing. So this work for me is connected to that. My principal Connie, when she, when we would go to her and tell her the drama that we were experiencing as uh workers in the. At Canyon Springs, they demoted her because she was trying to help us.
All true.
Demoted her. So I'm doing this work for the principals out there who are doing good work and you're threatened to be demoted. I'm doing this work because you're in fear that you can't speak up against Brenda Larson Mitchell because you're feared that you'll get demoted. I'm doing this work because a principal at a high school got demoted because he gave the wrong software. And yet we got principals right now cussing dang their kids out and they're still in their position. That's why I'm doing this work. I'm doing this work for the students who have been overrepresented in special education. I'm doing this work for the students who are not getting their um. Who's, who the laws are not being followed for their disability. You're not following I U P. I'm doing this work because you got people up here who not doing their job. They're getting paid six figures. And they're not improving no results. I'm doing this work for the parents who speak Spanish who feel like they, their voices are not heard. I'm doing this work for our Asian community who. Where, where's the representation in leadership? Nonexistent. I'm doing this work because we need to bring kindness, humanity back to the center. We need to hold people accountable. If you're not gonna do the job appropriately, if you're gonna think that you're, if you're gonna be a dictator, a tyrant. You don't need to be in the position. So you can guarantee. Now I know they got a lot of policies over there on the books talking about you can't go to the school. They try to, they don't want you to go to the school. They don't want you to do this. They don't want you to do that. Listen, the game needs to change. And like Anna just said, she said, uh, uh, let's clean house together in twenty twenty-four. You can guarantee that you're gonna have a trustee in District E. Who will not speak for the people, but who will speak with the people. You can guarantee if you have an issue, I will be there to bat for you like you are my own child, like you are my own mother, my auntie, my sister or my brother. I will go to bat for you. And we've reached our time. I'm about to start preaching. But this was a good session. Oh, my goodness, I love it. Thank you, Tracy. And thank you to all those who contributed today. Um. We, we have to get back to the center. We really do. And that was um humanity back to the center. That was trustee Zamora. Who said that trustee Zamora is in the um. In the Facebook Live, so thank you trustee. And um, that's it. Um, the meeting, again, I want to say this really quick, the meeting. On Thursday starts at five P M. And it's back at the head shed at the um Edward Greer Center, Education Center. So please, let's put our trustees to the fire. Let them know. That you're their trustee, that they're your trustee, and let's hold them accountable. We are in the place to shift power in this district. And not only shift it, but to shift it, maintain it and sustain it. We can do that. I really do have faith in that. Are there any last words from anyone before we leave?
Just make sure you go out to the board meeting. Make sure you call into the board meeting the next two days. Sending letters, have your friends, family. And make sure that you pack the board meeting the way that you did, you know, a few weeks back. Um, because they need to know that everybody means business. And that enough is enough at this point and uh. Time and hold, hold their feet to the fire.
Exactly. Exactly. Big shout out to our friends who joined on the Facebook Live, um Belinda Denise, Ashley Dodson, Simone Davis. Um, Ashley Gant. Uh, let's see, I think uh Ms. Amy's in here with us on the Zoom. And Anna Marie Binder, she's running for trustee in District A. And thank you so much for joining our conversation. Thank you trustee Brenda Zamora for joining our conversation. And thank you. And those who were watching and didn't respond, thank you. Make sure you share. Um, share this Facebook Live to, with your friends. And thank you for all of those who joined today on um in the Zoom. It was really a pleasure to be able to see your faces. And we look forward to seeing you next time. Again, my name is Camila Bywaters. I'm running for the Board of School Trustees for District E. I look forward to serving this community in the best way that we can and we can do this together. We can shift power and we can clean house together. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.